We're all on work. I'm straight and trying to hear what he's saying. I could hear Leroy, of course, he was closer, and I could hear Wayne, because he was closer. But the presenters couldn't hear them. I could hear those that spoke in public comment, but I couldn't hear those other two people that spoke from the very front. And I'm thinking, is it my ears, or is it just they have no sense?
How are you doing?
You don't have amplification.
No, sir, I'm just... Dr. Michael has to sit close so he can ring me in. Is that your Gatorade upstairs? I took one.
We do that little rotation, so actually I like that. Firstly, I think they don't need that much room. They are adding some space back in the back. I don't know why they feel there's have to be that much space between the people on the chairs.
Hey, how are you? How you been?
Oh, changes changes. Great.
Hi, Peter.
How are you, Linda?
Fine, thanks, how about you?
Not bad. Chicken with the head barely on.
What?
Chicken with the head barely on.
I have two minutes to go to the bathroom. Hey, I want you to know, Old Rag Mountain was much easier twenty-five years ago.
What?
Old Rag Mountain was a much easier climb twenty-five years ago.
I don't know about that.
For me, it was.
Did she do it then?
Yeah, 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 that's what...
Twenty-five years ago?
Twenty-five years, yeah. Bobby and I talked about it, twenty-five, yeah.
Well, I can see why it would be easier then for you.
It was in much better shape.
A little bit younger.
Yeah. I don't remember it being as long on the way down. That down part, mind me.
No, 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 no.
The road that leads up to it, but then you get up there. You know, you actually had to climb over rocks and stuff to get down that trail to the other side.
There was some scrambling that we had to do, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know that I could have done it alone.
Well... The county commissioners wanted to know where you were, they said, "Where's Peter?" "Where's Peter?"
Peter wants nothing to do with you. Did they really say that?
No.
Hello? Oh, maybe I should turn it on. Hello? Okay, good afternoon. We're meeting this aft- meeting this afternoon in a work session. Our topic is the teacher evaluation and frontline technology system. And we have Mrs. Joni Burkhardt, the coordinator of teacher evaluation and professional development, with us this afternoon as our presenter, so, Mrs. Burkhardt.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for bringing me in and talking about teacher evaluation. I am very facilitative in my discussions, so if you have any questions at any time, please do not hesitate to stop, ask questions, make me clarify what we're talking about. If I go too quickly through the technology part, slow me down, there's a, there's an op- there's a chance that I might like geek you out a little bit when it comes to the technology, so just say we've had enough there. So, I do want to start with just the goals for this session, because I think in order to understand the frontline technology, what you really need to understand is the process of evaluation that is defined by the Maryland State Department of Education. And this came out in the year 2013. I had just left the classroom with the teachers, and we were looking at defining the comprehensive process. I also want to show you how frontline technology is the reason that we use a technology service in order to keep all of these moving parts in order for teachers to create efficiency, simplicity. That is always my goal for teachers. How can I create a system, as I'm looking, with cooperation and collaboration from teachers, administrators, the senior staff here? How can we make this somewhat of a complex system a little easier to get to so that it does not take a lot of time for them to answer, to justify, and yet they can have a really great conversation about teaching with their administrator? And I think it's very important, I was a teacher for many years, and I'm always excited about teaching, I'm always excited to share what we do in teaching and what teachers do. And so I think that evaluation is that process where years ago, somebody would just come in, look at you, observe, write down what they think. Now evaluation has begun to, we have begun to look at, how are you teaching? How is that working? Are the students successful? And I'm able to have that conversation with that administrator to better look at my teaching practices, better look at student growth, and better look at what is it that I need to change and what is it that I want to remain. So, I'm going to go through a little bit about, first of all, the process of evaluation and what the Maryland State Department of Education said that, what is required for evaluation. Hey, everything is stuck right now, but I'm really good at technology, so just give me a second here. Oh, it's moving on the screen, it's just not delaying, okay, forgive me. Let me go way back here, my screen's just not moving. Thank you. Okay, so in the year 2013, the implementation of the Teacher Principal Evaluation System, they determined that they wanted fifty percent of a teacher's evaluation to be about performance scores. This is how you teach what it looks like in your classroom. And then the fifty percent of teachers' evaluation was for student growth scores, how students are doing in class. I know a lot of times, whenever I was a teacher, I would teach, I would say, "Why am I not reaching certain students?" I don't know that there was that depth of an examination by myself at that time about looking at student work. So, with the change with Common Core, looking at student work, developing curriculum, where now the, the State Department wanted to focus on student growth scores also. And the rules that they, one of the rules that they changed through COMAR was that teachers will be evaluated every year. And what I mean by that is this, while we're going to be evaluated every year, you might not be observed every year. Therefore, if you're not observed every year, if you're only observed once every three years, your scores from your observation carry forward for the following two years. So if I'm deemed highly effective in the year 2013, in 2014 I have highly effective, 2015 I have highly effective in professional practice. The student growth scores, though, must be measured every year, that other fifty percent. So again, you might not be observed every year, but you do receive a summative evaluation. And then, at the minimum, teachers are observed once every three years. So if I'm observed in thirteen fourteen, three years later, I'm going to be observed in sixteen seventeen, and so on. That can change administrators by negotiated agreement, can add people to the observation cycle, and sometimes they do. Sometimes they're looking at certain teacher habits. Sometimes they're looking at a, a full team approach, maybe I'm looking at the entire third grade, maybe my score's decreased. Maybe I'm looking at a new team, maybe I have changed, and I did this once. I went from high school, was a high school teacher all of my life, and then I went to middle school. It was rough, my first year in middle school, even though I was an experienced teacher. And what I had to do is I had to learn how to relate to middle school children. Now, I will say after that, middle school is my favorite place to teach now, so. But again, you're looking at observation evaluation as a way of improving teaching skills, not a gotcha moment. So, then we have our student learning objectives, and they are used as your growth measurements. So in your performance scores, if we think about it, fifty percent of a teacher's evaluation is the performance scores. And twenty-two counties out of the twenty-four counties in Maryland adopted the Charlotte-Danielsom Framework for Teaching. You may have heard of it. There are four different domains there, twenty-two components. And each domain that we use is worth twelve point five percent. So as a teacher, I'm looking at my domain one, planning, domain two, classroom environment, domain three, instruction, and domain four, professional responsibilities, each being worth twelve point five percent. I think that a lot of the counties chose the Charlotte-Danielsom Framework for Teaching, it's a research, research-based tool. It has been widely researched, there's, there are a lot of people who like the Framework for Teaching. There are some people who don't like the Framework for Teaching. We chose that one in Maryland, because again, it was the most research-based tool that we found. Sure, sure, absolutely. I know.
With the Framework for Teaching, two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. If I remember correctly, and I read the book. She did not, I do not remember any point in that book where she recommended that her model be used as an evaluative tool. Yet we turned that it into that? Is that how we did it, or?
We did not, here, here's, if I'm going to be really truthful on what happened. Charlotte-Danielsom has been around since I was a counting mentor, I can remember using the old Brown book, and she used it as a coaching tool. So when I go in and I work with a teacher, teacher to teacher, I'm coaching, I'm looking at your practices, you figure out a goal, we still look at all of the data and everything. That was up until the year 2011. Common Core comes in, and she developed the 2013 framework, which she did intend to use as an evaluation tool, that it could be used. Now, can it be used in coaching? Absolutely, and what I'm going to tell you is that the best administrators that I ever had used it not only as an evaluation tool, but also a tool to talk to me about how I'm doing and what they're seeing. Because I do know this about me as a teacher, the teacher that I am in my head doesn't always show up in the classroom. See, I have all these ideas and I think I'm getting all my messages across. And then whenever somebody is looking directly at my teaching and trying to take it apart, component by component, looking at different elements, are you engaging students? Are you asking questions? Do you have an environment that builds rapport and respect? And Joni, what do you do after school? You know, there were so many times after school when I was involved in professional learning opportunities and professional development, in teaching other classes. And nobody, they always said, "Hey, this, this is great, yeah, we'll put it in your evaluation." But what the Framework for Teaching does is now it breaks down teaching so that you can talk about, discuss, and advocate for the work that you do as a teacher. So, it, it was not intentioned as that, it has become that. Whether that's good or bad, I'll leave that up to you.
After-school element.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Much time after school is being professional development, of being no time after school for speaking. Able to help those kids who need help the most, how do we find a balance? Professional development time, not necessarily the professional. How do we find a balance?
And I... Right, and I think, and Dr. Michael, please, if you want to add anything in.
I guess I'm just a little confused by the statement. I'm not aware that we have professional development going on that often for every teacher, every night. And I attend almost as many professional developments as we have, I try to get to them. I just came from a professional development, the start of one o'clock every day, twenty for administrators. I try to go to the nighttime professional developments, you know, we'll have at Eastern, last week at a math, fourth grade professional development, we had fourteen teachers there from twenty-six different schools in their fourth grade, so, you know. And several of those people were mentor teachers or lead teachers, so it was a very small percentage of fourth grade teachers that were there. They probably won't meet again for, you know, six weeks, seven weeks. So I'm not sure what's happened at the school level, I'd have to refer to Matt and Rick, but I'm just not aware of that much happening that night. We are trying to offer as much professional development. We have very continuous, kind of a continuity of a program going on this year with our A and S meetings that we have each month, connected to our lead teacher meeting each month, connected to department leader meeting each month, and then connected to professional development opportunities we're offering, which I think is very important, that all those things are interconnected. And I think that's the first time we've done that in my memory, as far as the school system. So, I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to, but be glad to look into it if there's a specific school or something.
All I know is what I hear sometimes, and sometimes it's accurate, sometimes it's not. But, you know, when you have meetings with your lead teacher, meetings with your department weekly, and other meetings that sit, or whatever the case might be, it does cut into the amount of time that you have to set up meetings and tutor sessions, or whatever the case might be with your kids. And, you know, like I said, all I'm looking for is some balance.
Well, we'd want balance as well, as much time as teachers can spend with children or spend on their planning, that's absolutely a part of what we're doing as well. I'll ask Dr. Akers and Mr. Simler to look in at school by school and see if we can kind of get a range of expectations as far as teachers.
Yeah, that the framework also encourages teachers to be involved with students as much as possible in the professional responsibilities. So one of the measurements does occur through, how much time are you spending? And how are you communicating, not only with students, but also with parents? That's an important component in the framework. So...
Trying to go back to your...
Yes, I am, but I, I have everything right here now, sorry about that. So, in 2014, after we had, and let me just go back here for just a second. After we developed, and really what we did is that we adopted the Framework for Teaching. And remember, we also had our pilot schools go through this, this was not like our first go-around with the framework. We had TIF schools who had used the Framework for Teaching, we had piloted that with five different schools. We were seeing some good results. We knew it was research-based, and then we adopted it. But we also knew that we have teachers out there who are not traditional Framework for Teaching teachers. And in the year fourteen fifteen, we decided to work with the teachers collaboratively, with the association, and with the administrators to develop other evaluation tools. And our goals were to review the, the Framework for Teaching and develop these tools so that they would fit for those teachers who are people like case managers, social workers, athletic directors, birth-to-five teachers, school counselors, speech-language pathologists, and lead teachers. This was exciting for me, because at this time, even though I had worked in the system for a long time, I always defined my teaching by the standard teacher, the teacher who was in the classroom. These people contribute so much to the education of students in Washington County. And to work with them and develop a tool that would be fitting to the job that they do every day, provided equity in the system. And it took us a year to develop this, this was, this was difficult work. Because, you know, you have to look at different standards and guidance, you're looking at ASCA standards. And birth-to-five teachers, they go into the homes. So of course you can't gauge somebody by the work that a, a child does when they're only birth-to-five. You're looking at maybe the importance of working with families, speech-language pathologists. Again, all of these areas enrich what we do right now in Washington County. And then after developing these and passing these through, we put them, they were approved and implemented in the year fifteen, sixteen. And again, I worked with the association, they looked through the tools, worked with the teachers. You can't develop an evaluation tool if you don't have input from teachers. And then also working with the supervisors and administrators to determine what is best. So, that was the fifty percent, the evaluation percent. The other fifty percent comes from student growth scores. And this is the other parts, they're called student learning objectives. They were implemented in the 2013, fourteen school year. Now remember, whenever you first start something, you must evolve from there. Everybody thinks this is a great idea, and whenever you work collaboratively, you realize that things work really well, and then you have to change things that don't work as well. When we first started, we had the district SLO, we had a school SLO, and we had an individual SLO. These were the percentages in thirteen, fourteen, and fourteen, fifteen, that the student learning objectives were worth. That's three SLOs to ask teachers to do, okay, to be aware of, to be responsible for. We met with them throughout the year, we listened to their comments, Dr. Akers, Mr. Simler. They did an excellent job of talking with and talking to teachers. And what we said, what we heard teachers saying to us was this, "We like the SLO in that, again, we're testing something about our teaching, but three SLOs is a bit much, can you do something to help us out?" And through working with that committee, we were able to, in the year fifteen, sixteen, change it to this, and it is currently, the district SLO is worth twenty percent, and then the individual SLO is worth thirty percent. So again, the individual SLO is worth more than what the district and the school was before. Again, putting the emphasis on, how are you working with students? What are you seeing? How are you measuring that? Student learning objectives came out of Denver, that was the first place that did it, and they found remarkable results in their growth with students. And there's nothing like, whenever you're a teacher, to look at your students and be able to see the growth that occurs, and be able to measure that growth, to target certain things in your classroom and see that growth. And then say, "Oh, my goodness, I can replicate this again, because the evidence shows, not just that I'm a great teacher, but that I was able to measure this, and these students were able to succeed because of this." So, yes, please, I'll go back.
Yeah. How's the individual teacher held responsible for district SLO, SLOs?
So...
I don't understand that.
The, the district SLO, well, I have, I have brought experts here with me today who will be glad to explain to you about, more about the district SLO. Dr. Akers is going to come down and join us. And Mr. Simler, I'm sorry, forgive me.
Good afternoon, everyone. The district SLO is based on literacy, and it is based on the number-one goal we have in every school improvement plan in the county, and that is that all students are going to read on grade level by third grade and continue to do so throughout their school career. So we wanted to have a district SLO that aligned with that goal. Keeping in mind that not everybody teaches reading, obviously, but we do have literacy as that goal, and so we consider every teacher a teacher of literacy. But specifically, the way we do that, if you are a teacher of record in elementary or middle school, your, your district SLO is based on the students who are assigned to you. So if, for example, you're an elementary teacher and you have twenty-five students, and say fifteen of those students are reading on grade level when they come to you, the rest are below grade level, then you're expected to be considered distinguished or to receive a distinguished rating on your SLO. You're to increase that by ten percent, it's actually four or eight percent, which would be equivalent to two students. So to be considered distinguished, if you had fifteen students reading on grade level at the beginning of the year, you're expected to maintain all those students reading on grade level and add two more. So that by the end of the year, you had seventeen students on grade level. And that would be considered distinguished performance. If you only have one, that would be additional student, meaning having sixteen total, that would be considered proficient. You know, and if it's less than that, if you have fewer students at the end of the year than you did at the beginning of the year, then you could receive a, a rating of, of basic or ineffective on that particular SLO. And that SLO is worth twenty points in your overall valuation. It's twenty out of the fifty on your growth portion of your valuation. So, to put it in perspective, because your individual SLO is worth thirty points, you would have to be rated basic or ineffective on that district SLO and on your individual SLO to be deemed ineffective in student growth. You know, it's not, it's not valued high enough to, by itself, if you were otherwise effective, to rate you as ineffective in student growth. It would have to be that you had a fairly low rating on your other SLO in order for it to result in an ineffective for student growth.
But are there factors that a teacher would have no control over, who, that could enter into it? That some of the kids who were reading on grade level, when they arrived, that weren't at the end of the year? Couldn't there be circumstances that the teacher has no control over that would make perhaps one or two of those students slip or something?
Well, for example, you know, when you talk about the population, because remember with these SLOs, they're, they're, even though it's a district SLO, principals have a lot of latitude to work with teachers. So, for example, just say that a, a student had a series of long illnesses and fell behind. You know, the principal and the teacher can discuss that and remove that person from the population that's being measured. And teachers can always, you know, bring those kinds of issues. Typically, the issues that teachers do bring to principals revolve around attendance. And so we've typically said that students have to be there at least eighty percent of the time to receive instruction before we will count them in that population that's being measured. So, yes, there are factors, but those can be, you know, corrected for in that meeting between the principal and, and the teacher. And every year, we have, you know, teachers who automatically present to their principals the, the list of kids who were not in their class eighty percent of the time or more, to say, you know, "Let's not count these, because I don't feel like I had a fair shot at getting the kind of growth that, that we were looking for."
As a former English teacher, I would have no problem with the literacy being in a SLO, but what about a band director or a gym teacher? There's very little reading in either of those two categories.
Well, again, we, we consider every teacher a teacher of literacy, and, and what I've seen, and it's true that if I have two hundred students as a PE teacher, the amount of growth that I am personally going to cause is limited. But what we've asked is that if, for example, that PE teacher gives a, a, a reading assignment about sports, you know, about the sport that they're going to be learning to do in gym class, and it's something they didn't do in the past. We've even had PE teachers who require students to do some writing relative to something they've learned. But the combination of all these teachers suddenly doing more literacy activities than they ever did before helps us to meet that goal. And yes, are they hoping that the English teacher and the social studies teacher and the science teacher are doing a lot more reading and writing in class to improve? Yes. Are they going to contribute quite as much to that effort? Probably not, because of the nature of what they teach. But if they never contributed before, and now they are contributing to that, that literacy, then it's kind of achieved what we were after in the first place. And like I said, unless, you know, you receive a, a very low score on that SLO, because no one is doing well as far as meeting... because no one is doing well as far as meeting that goal, and you're doing poorly on your other SLO, it's not going to have a huge impact on the evaluation.
Does that, that does seem like it's apples to apples to me. For an English teacher, you're expecting a higher standard, but a gym teacher, you're not. And yet, you're, 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 I don't know, it just sounds kind of weird to me. It's...
The ongoing case, not just for SLOs, but for part data, HSA data, MSA data, even back to functional test data. Hasn't been in the evaluation necessarily, but there's always been more, fortunately, more attention to those areas because they're tested areas.
Do we keep the, we hold the gym teacher at the same standard as an English teacher?
I think we're trying to expect them to contribute to the SLO and be part of the success of the student. I think that's the purpose of the SLO being wrapped in there from the district level.
For the district SLO, and then they also have their individual SLO, which can be more accountable to the curriculum or the subject area that they're teaching. So it gives more flexibility, more specifics that they have within their individual curriculum area.
I can see the individual thing, but I'm just saying as a district, it doesn't seem like it's fair to that teacher of English that you're going to say, "Okay, this is your fault if this person doesn't read and write." But you're not going to do the same thing to a gym teacher because typically, I mean, and I haven't been in the classroom for a teacher or a gym teacher, so I can't remember me sitting down other than four times a year and doing a test in gym class. Everything else was just the sport.
At the elementary level, perhaps it's not necessarily a test or written assignment, but it's also vocabulary building and knowledge and things like that. So in physical education, when you're talking about muscles and maybe certain types of movement or flexibility, it's building vocabulary for students as well. So, I mean, which is all part of literacy components.
I don't see that. I'm sorry, and I'm not disagreeing with you, but to me, it just seems like we're going to hold these English teachers at a higher standard than what we would do for a gym teacher. That's just my thought, and I'm not a teacher. So I might need a little bit more expertise for you guys to help me understand that later on after the thing. But to me, it just seems like we're...
Right, exactly. And I can, and I know this is about frontline, so I know that you guys... What is frontline?
Yeah. Just on a personal note, having been an athletic director for the last five years of my service, I'd like to, maybe you could send me the evaluation form for an AD. I'd just like to see what it looks like, just out of curiosity.
I'm going to show you where you can find it. Okay, so now what we've all been waiting for. I thought it was important, though, for you to understand the many components that teachers are looking at and administrators are looking at whenever you're talking about observation and evaluation and why a technology system is needed to help. I need this to come up on the screen so that I can see because I'm stuck in. There we go, there we go, clear. Need to learn patience and quit clicking. Okay, so... What is frontline technology? Frontline technology, it is not a flea and tick system. I know that everybody is like, "Frontline, that's the fleas and ticks." It is not that. It is that, but in education, frontline is also a technology software company that is acquiring many different technologies and putting things together so that it is a one place. What we want for our teachers in Washington County is that teachers can go to one place, log into one area, see both their professional development and their evaluation. I'm able to generate a lot of different information about SLOs, you know. I'm able to develop reports on evaluation effectiveness ratings. It also informs the professional development. If we have somebody who is giving a professional development, how do you know it's good? How do you know that teachers like this? Not only like this, need this, and are using it. So we're able to measure that and then make educated decisions about the professional development that we're offering. Another thing that I really like is teachers are able to view their observations and their evaluations from 2013 and forward without ever having to step into the human resources office and requesting files to be brought out to you. So this is anywhere, anyplace, anytime, they can access any information. I really like frontline, and Washington County has experienced great success with frontline in their customer service. This is important in a technology company. We are able to, just yesterday, I was working with them, and I said, "Do you have a solution for this?" They said, "Why, yes, we do." And we were able to create a solution right there. We had a state report last year that we needed help with, and they were able to add in some numbers. It took them one half hour. We were able to send that report to the State Department that day. So they're very quick, very efficient. So how does frontline help Washington County teachers? Each teacher is given a specific workflow. And so, again, that teacher can look at their individual workflow and see where they are, what they're accomplishing, and what they've completed. As they were talking about the scores, I want you to think about what they just said. 30% here, 20% here, 12.5% here, 50% of this, 50% of... If you had to keep all of those calculations in your head, I don't think I could do it. What this does, because the technology is so rich, is it takes all of these calculations, puts it right into a sheet for teachers, a summative evaluation, and then allows them to access all of this information in less than a second. Teachers can also print. Sometimes teachers like to print information. So you can print from here, you can save. It doesn't have to be just in one place. It provides, again, the professional development and evaluation in one location. And it also allows teachers to submit artifacts. I had some teachers call me this week, and they said, "Joni, can I go back and look at my SLO from last year?" I said, "Absolutely, here's where you go." And so it was quick and easy, and they were able to see their growth from last year to this year and maybe use some of the components from last year. So, this is what frontline looks like. I took some screenshots. This is what a dashboard looks like. And if you look right up here, I start off with news and information. We can always put information that teachers need to know quickly to access, MSD course schedules. The next part and the my requests, that's where a teacher would find all of the PD that they have taken, all of the PD that they have requested, and what they have completed. And then the next part in green is the evaluation. So as you can see right there, the schedule components, the action required. Right now, teachers are being asked to complete the SLO individual and district level. This is what a workflow looks like. And again, this is still in the same place. I just panned down the screen. An evaluation, teachers look at the individual, the district. They can upload artifacts. Maybe I'm somebody who wants to keep my artifacts, or a teacher wants to keep their artifacts throughout the year as they're measuring possibilities. It's right there in one place, and I don't have to go get paper copies, and I don't have to go look in my Dropbox, and I don't have to go look in my email because I might have stored it in my Google, but I might have stored it in Dropbox, but I might have stored it, and you can't find it. So it keeps everything in one central location.
What would be an artifact? What would it look like?
So, an artifact for an SLO could be a data chart of what you're keeping, how students are scoring. It could be a pre-assessment, a post-assessment for an observation. It might be something, it could be pictures, photos, students engaged. How do you engage students? There's nothing better than a picture to show, this is how students are engaged in my classroom. You can upload anything you want. The only thing that I have not been able to upload is from some remote Promethean board. Everything else, Excel sheets uploaded, Word docs uploaded, Google links uploaded. Everything we've been able to upload. They also have a pre-conference form. So if a teacher is on observation cycle, and you want to think about, one-third of our teachers are on observation cycle per year, approximately. What happens here, they have, it comes, it pops right up on their screen. So a principal or an evaluator has to schedule the pre-conference with a teacher. It pops up on their screen, and here was something that I changed just this Sunday because I wanted to save teachers, one click. I'm a one-click kind of person. If you can do it in one click, it's always better for me. So right here, we had, the teacher had to accept the schedule. And in accepting the schedule, then the pre-conference form would appear. I made the change, and I said, "Hey, why don't you just put that pre-conference form right here?" Talked with the principals about it, talked, ran it through the teachers, said, "Would you like that better?" They said, "Absolutely, we would love to have that." Then I don't have to accept the schedule. The pre-conference form will be right there, and I can complete it. Pre-conference form should take a teacher about a half hour to complete. And then they have a teacher observation. And this is what a teacher observation looks like. Whether a teacher is rated as distinguished, proficient, basic, or unsatisfactory. And then the evidence collected is below. And this gives a lot of detail to a teacher who is working every day in a classroom about what you, they, what a distinguished classroom looks like, what a proficient classroom looks like. And then, the other thing in observation evaluation is a post-conference. And again, we made this change. The principal schedules it. The teacher simply clicks on it, completes the form, saves it, submits it. And then the principal, then the discussion begins. Technology is never to take the place of a really quality conversation that goes on between an administrator and a teacher about the teaching and what's going on in the classroom. It is only the starting point for that conversation. And then at the end, everybody gets an end-of-year summary. Now, as I talked about, all of these numbers running through, these are the calculations that you would have to do in order to figure out what your final score was. And it's a lot of calculations. So, again, as you can see right there, right at the top of the evaluation report, we can see this teacher was rated, if you go right across to the left, the teacher was rated effective in professional practice, and then was also rated effective in student growth. And they come out with a final score as effective, and it's right there in the orange. Then you can go down through, and you can look at everything that is possible, especially if you were observed that year. You can see not only how you did in a certain domain, you can see the score that you received for that domain. You can see the granular level details. You can print all of this out if you want. It is extensive, and you don't have to do that at all because the system takes care of it for you. The other thing that frontline offers us is not only observation evaluation, but it also offers us a professional development catalog. Again, whenever teachers are looking for professional development that they want to take, right now, for example, we have 22 different classes being offered whenever I did this screenshot. A teacher can go through, they can look at it, they can see the description, they can see who's teaching it, they can see the location, and it is this easy. What you do is you click on the workshop. This pops up with a description. You click on "Sign up now," and that's it, you're registered for the class. And then the supervisor or the content specialist or whoever's teaching the PD can see your name. And then, a teacher can also see this, and this is very important for teachers. They can see what classes they've taken, how they've taken, and also, this will count towards APC renewal units for those who are on an APC certificate. So, PD, observation, evaluation, information, all in one place. Makes it extremely easy for teachers. And the reason that teachers like it so much is that they can track their attendance. They can evaluate professional learning sessions. The sessions can be seen by supervisors. I can look at it and see what adjustments I need to make to my professional development to meet the needs of all teachers. And we can design follow-up activities that will help teachers. Somebody's struggling in an area, they take a PD. They learn from the PD, they go back and implement, and they have questions. That's again where another professional development can help you become better at your job that you do as a teacher. Now I can design another PD with the questions that you've asked from here. We've found very favorable results from this. I'll give you a statistic. I run a help desk. I'm the only one who runs the frontline of observation evaluation help desk. 1,800 teachers, approximately administrators. I have had 10 help requests. I mean, the system is so easy to use that usually people, it's very intuitive. And usually, the most requested that I have is, "Joni, I forget what my password is." And I say, "I can't tell you what your password is. You're going to have to get in touch with somebody." The other thing that we did that made it so simple for teachers, whenever we first started with TeachScape, and remember TeachScape was bought by frontline Technologies, is we merged the password together. I don't know about you, I have great difficulty remembering three and four and five passwords. Can't do it anymore. So this now merges with all of their other passwords. So whatever their password is for their email, for Google, it's the same password for frontline. Again, we're trying to create efficiency, usability, focused observation and evaluation and professional development so that teachers can be successful every day in their classrooms. One central location.
Connect to their Google?
They can, they can put a link in here, but it does not automatically connect. Frontline is a very secure system, and they will not send me anything over email. They have additional white papers. If you ever want to see the white papers on the security of the frontline system. And even when they send me information, like if I have a technical problem with something, they're like, "Uh, no, it won't be through email. We'll send you through a hi-tail account or something like that so that you can access the information that way." They are very stringent about security measures, and they have not had any issues with security thus far.
You mentioned passwords.
Uh-huh.
And so a lot of this information is available to individual teachers with regard to their evaluations, their professional development. What do administrators or people working in the HR department, what can they access in frontline about an individual student or teacher? Not student, teacher.
This is a great question. They cannot access anything until we send it to them. A teacher's observation and evaluation is between that teacher and that evaluator. As a teacher adds information to that, they submit their information to the evaluator. At that point, the evaluator can see the information that they've submitted. So a teacher can save their information, they can continue to work on it. Whenever the principal or the evaluator is done, they submit the observation evaluation back to the teacher. Then the teacher can look at their observation and evaluation and look at all of the information. At the end of the year, everything will be taken from the frontline system and be sent to HR in a digital file, and they will keep that in their systems there. But as a super user, I'm the only super user, I can access information for HR if they need it right now. Again, looking at the security of a system, here's the other thing I like. There's a digital footprint all over this. So let's say I was an unethical person, and I went in and I changed something on somebody's observation evaluation. You would have a digital footprint. Joni Burkhart did this on this date. It follows up with every trace that you do. They will, and they're very teacher-friendly. Look for ways of improvement in that. So that's the system. Oops, thank you. Here are the resources that I offer for teachers. I do provide training sessions. I think it's important. Even though that the system is intuitive, it is always important to work with teachers and provide information. Administrators are provided five training sessions a year. New teachers, when they come in here, new teachers are just trying to find their way around the county, the way around the curriculum. We do not want to add one more thing to their plate. I take them through an hour and a half of how to use frontline, what the observation evaluation system is like, who's going to be your evaluator, what you should look for. The content specialists meet with the teachers. They have meetings with the new teachers. And then we also have an evaluation website right here I've created. And I've also created Screencast. I'll click on the evaluation website. Screencasts are for people, I like Screencasts myself, and I created these so that people could easily follow along with a voice, stop what they're doing, and then be able to type in at the same time. So you watch the Screencast, and we have about 10 different Screencasts. Let me take you there first. Okay, I cannot because it looks like it's not linked in. But there is an, also an evaluation website. Yes, it's not going to live link it. The evaluation website is filled with all information. It has the nine different tools listed on there. This is also important to teachers because sometimes teachers are getting a master's degree in counseling. degree in counseling, and they might want to see the evaluation tools that are being used. SLOs are there, the district SLOs are there, information on how to write a quality SLO, how to measure a quality SLO, any type of information is right on that evaluation website and it's linked in. I also gave you, I think it was a handout, maybe it's right at the end. Oh, thank you so much. Okay. Okay, so here's the evaluation website. It just starts with a brief description of why we do evaluation and what is required by the Maryland State Department of Education. I also have the evaluation tools, and they look very similar to what's...
Athletic directors.
Athletic directors, here you go, Mr. Stouffer. Athletic directors is right here. I will pull that one up. You can see. Everything opens along a new tab. Oh, it says, "Hi, Richard," but I don't have Richard's email or password to go in, so...
Probably I hate my job.
But you, you see, you can go in, and you can look at anything. Here's the video tutorials, if you want to do a video tutorial. I even put a Google slide on here, so administrators, if they were explaining how to do, how to work with Frontline, they could look at that. A link to all Screencasts that we do, the resources for SLOs. I try to include as much information so that it's helpful for teachers and administrators who are working with us.
Joni, you say new teachers are provided three training sessions every year. How is that?
So, in October, because I know that SLOs, they're looking at SLOs, they're looking at observation, evaluation, information, I schedule three trainings, and what I try to do is individualize. So, I'll start a training at three o'clock for those schools that are early, and then I'll start a training the following week at four o'clock, and then I'll do one at four thirty so that I can meet the needs. It's difficult to go home and then come back. So, I try to schedule those three different times a day so that it meets the needs of all new teachers. And I would say, out of all of the teachers that we hired, most did come to it, and then some said, "I'll watch the Screencast." And they also have the support of a lead teacher, a mentor, and the administration in the building to help them.
And you said that takes about an hour and a half to go through?
The Screencast? My Screencasts are between three and five minutes per session. The one on evaluation, I did go over a little bit, eleven minutes. I get excited about teaching and talking about. I think it's important for teachers, again, to really truly look at their teaching and what they're doing, and I wanted them to have a clear explanation of what you're looking at whenever you're looking at an observation. So, that's the longest one at eleven minutes.
And how many other schools in Maryland have this program?
Frontline? I think they are up to probably six districts are using Frontline. Off the top of my head, I know it's Howard, PG. Those are the two that I work with mainly.
PG.
PG, and Baltimore City or County, but I don't know which one, truthfully. This is a nationwide company, too. So, not only do they work here, they work out west, they work, you know, New Mexico, all across the nation. Other questions for me?
Any other questions?
I will say this, my last parting words, for twenty-seven dollars a teacher, that's what we pay for this.
How much?
Twenty-seven dollars per teacher. It's a, twenty-seven dollars, a teacher gets to be able to look at one place to figure out observation and evaluation. Twenty-seven dollars, they can access their information anywhere, anytime, anyplace. They get to look at evaluations of supervisors. It's, it's not an expensive initiative in that we get so much with it. And we look to expand and make this even more efficient as the year goes on. We have some work that we're going to be working on with the Association. I've already talked with Mr. Becker about some things that we would like to look at adjusting in the pre and the post and making it more accessible, easier for teachers to get to this, and all teachers, not just your traditional teachers.
I think anytime you can make things easier for teachers because they have so much on their plates, that this is a very good thing.
Yes, it's always my goal. That's what I look at.
Thank you.
To do excellent work for teachers.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have an agenda planning committee meeting, a closed session at three thirty.
Three o'clock.
Absolutely, thank you.